Is there additional to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dave is their second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Keith? Is there any discussion? Call the motion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, motion carries, board in favor. We also have our minutes of our November 6th meeting. Is there any additional changes or corrections to the minutes as presented?
There was, I'm not trying, I don't, I don't see it now. I know there was one where there was just a few words left out. It was just one of these, I'm trying.
One of the...
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. It was like, you know, when the vote was recorded or something. It just was obviously that you had, you had kind of done a boilerplate. We were going to fill in the vote or something, but it wasn't there.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, that we accept the minutes with, with that obvious, that obvious piece that was just left out.
All right, we have a motion by Dave to accept the minutes presented, but to verify that there wasn't any action that was...
Yeah, it was, it was just a typo thing that took care of.
The error correction was made.
Okay.
I'll second it.
The motion by Dave and seconded by Warren? Is there any discussion? Call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, motion carries, board in favor. This time is our public open forum. Anybody here wish to address the council? Seeing nobody here, we can continue right on. Move right in then to our reports and presentations. Brian, Police Department, monthly report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for October 2013. Some of the numbers we had, we had fifteen alarm calls. We had twenty-six assists for other agencies. Three burglaries. We had five hit-and-run accidents. Twenty-two matter of information calls. Twenty-six medicals. Ten property damage. Ten suspicious calls. We had eight thefts. And we had five verbal disputes. We had fourteen welfare checks. And we had a hundred and ninety-four verbal warnings, and you can see how they're broken up. For a total activity report of five hundred and twenty-three. So from September, we were up forty-six calls. We're up in traffic ninety-three, and up a total of a hundred and thirty-nine. And compare that to 2012. We were up calls nineteen, down in traffic fourteen, and up in total calls of five. Otherwise, that's all I have for October.
Any questions for Brian? All right, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Move on then to the airport report, Vicki.
Okay, this report is about the Airport Impact Group, which is the group that meets for the master plan and the airport layout plan. They had its third regular session on Wednesday, November thirteenth. The general purpose of this meeting was to review and further define the future development alternatives for the airport. Of the layout alternatives presented, it was a consensus of the group that the preferred alternative for future development of the primary runway would be to shift any future expansion to the south to minimize the impact from the safety zone overlays in the vicinity of I-94, including the former racetrack and the Walmart property. So as the airport gets longer, your safety zones get longer. They wanted to minimize the effect in the development areas of town, so they recommending that all future development at the airport would expand south. As far as the turf runway, their preferred alternative was to take the entire runway and shift it on a parallel to the south. And that would pull a lot of the safety issues that we're having and obstructions for those safety zones. It would pull them out of that area. So their preferred alternative is to do that. And the third thing they worked about was the development of the building area. And what they're going to be recommending, or appears to be recommending, the preferred development would include the ability for private hangars in the future, which is kind of what a lot of the airports are doing now. Rather than, once your tee hangars get busy or full, they're leasing space for people to build private hangars versus incurring the cost of building new tee hangars. So that's a long ways in the future unless it's for a commercial endeavor like some business comes in and can't fit into one of our tee hangars, that they need a bigger space. That they're saying that perhaps the city should look at the alternative of allowing that type of activity. So these are all things that, they, they look at all the different alternatives, they come back with recommendations. We will be setting a public hearing or a public meeting sometime in February. The group will be meeting one more time to kind of further narrow things down, and then they will present to the public. And to the entire council will be invited to come and become more informed on it. And then we're looking for some action sometime in the spring. And then after that, it gets sent to the FAA, and then there's quite a timeframe before they come back with approval. So we're about, probably two-thirds of the way through the timeframe of getting this project done. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Vicki, I just got a question in regards to the consensus of the board that should investigate possible purchase of the property located in the safety zone A. I know we've talked about potentially looking at acquiring property around the airport for many, many years. But now I noticed in near you, it could be with a reimbursable grant from the FAA and MINDOT.
What we're...
The likelihood.
Okay, what we're looking at is, and the property directly off the end of the turf runway is currently a foreclosed property that is vacant and is now listed for sale and owned by a bank. I did contact the agent that's representing them, informing them that they're aware that it's in safety zone A. But in the, also, I'm working with MINDOT Aeronautics to see if we purchase that, would we be eligible for a future reimbursement? So we can't get a grant for it until the master plan and the airport layout plan and all that is in place. But they're saying if we go through a certain process to purchase it now, we could get like a ninety-ten reimbursement in two to three years from now. So we just started working on that this last week, actually, to lay out how that could work. Now, we always take the risk of not getting reimbursed, but it's also a risk to have an entire home and its outbuildings laying within, in the safety zone. Because future grants would require you to correct any deficiencies. And that could be labeled as a deficiency. They'd say, "You correct that until we..." So it's kind of, we almost have to do it. And this would be the easiest or the least expensive alternative in the long run for the city. So we'll, we're working toward that. If we look like we can put it together, there's certain actions the city council has to take. And so we'll see.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other questions?
Just one thing, if they shift the runways to the south or anything like that, or run it parallel, is that power line going to come into play as far as expansion and everything?
You mean the power line down the Capex line?
Yeah.
No, we did have them run all the slopes at twenty-to-one, thirty-four-to-one, and fifty-to-one. And we would meet all of those. So any of the expansions that we would ever expect would be that. As far as the one moving parallel to the south, that's the turf one, which isn't impacted by the runway at all.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we had them run all the slopes for us.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vicki. All right. Move into our action items then. Action item seventy, approved resolution 2013 dash eighty-four. Accounts receiving adjustments.
We do have, within our accounting system, we invoice out different things for fire calls. Most of these are actually fire calls. We have an arena rental, et cetera. And at the end of the year, we like to clear them off the books either by write-off or sending them to collections. We do have six of them, I believe, we're recommending send to collections. The one you had in the packet, actually, one came in and paid. So that, Robert Bruce has been paid, so that can be removed from your list. We only have one this year that we're recommending to be write-off as collectible, uncollectible. They have exhausted all their insurance, et cetera, and they're, the chief is recommending that that be written off. The other removals are simply late fees that, they pay the bill minus the late fee because of crossing in the mail, et cetera. So we just want to, we clear those off the books. So what we're looking for is a approval to send to collections, one thousand six fifty-two fifty-four. Write-off as uncollectible, one ninety-six twenty. And then the removals of late fees of twenty-eight eighty, for a total of one thousand eight seventy-seven fifty-four. And then those ones, those ones that we send to collections, then they're off our books as receivables. But when we do, the money does come in, it just comes in as a cash payment.
Vicki, can you give me the numbers again so I can update my book here, please?
Sixteen fifty-two fifty-four.
Okay.
And then the one ninety-six twenty, twenty-eight eighty, for a total of eighteen seventy-seven fifty-four.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there a motion to approve the resolution 2013 dash eighty-four, sending unpaid invoices to collections in the amount of sixteen hundred and fifty-two fifty-four? Writing off one hundred and ninety-six twenties uncollectible, removing twenty-eight eighty corrections, and further approving the journal entry to an active transaction, pulling one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven sixty-four?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Keith? Any discussion? Call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions? Motion carries, board in favor. Okay, moving on to action item B, approved closure of City Hall office Friday after Thanksgiving.
This is, would be for the administrative staff, because the Public Works Union already has the day after Thanksgiving as a paid holiday. And so what we're looking for is for the city council to authorize us to have City Hall closed on the day after Thanksgiving. And then the staff would just utilize a vacation day to have that day off. We've kind of done this for the last few years. And if one of the staff members does want to work like up in the office or whatever they can and not use a vacation day, but the office wouldn't be open. Or not use a vacation day, but the office wouldn't be open.
Any questions of staff?
I was just wondering, rather than do this every year, if we just can't make that automatic, you know, somehow make it that, that's going to be closed on the Friday after Thanksgiving, rather than go through the moves every year?
We did have talk about that back when the Public Works got rid of their floating holiday and just made it automatic the day after Thanksgiving. For that union, we haven't necessarily taken that action on the personnel policy for administration. But maybe we should look at that. It's probably time to look at that whole policy anyway.
I think, I think it's something that we can, in the sense of the personnel policy, to commit, to review it. And they talked about the non-union staff benefits.
That's fine.
All right, then, is there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the closure of City Hall for the day after Thanksgiving?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Warren, seconded by Keith? Is there any discussion? Call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, motion carries, board in favor. All right, to go to C, household hazardous waste pickup.
This household hazardous waste collection I'm referring to is the one held in June at Becker's, where people can bring their fluorescent bulbs, their cans of paint, their, that type of pickup. And in the past, we've been able to do it on a Saturday, and then the city has to bring a few volunteers. And I know Keith has been out there and worked at that on different years. This last year, on Saturday, at the last minute, my volunteers weren't able to make it. And Stearns County, of course, because it was Saturday, didn't have very many sentenced to serve, and they had to work very late to finish cleaning up, and so this didn't go over real well. So he called me and he asked, "How about we make it a weekday so that he can use more sentence to serve?" And I was like, you know, "I don't know if a weekday really works. Becker's works best and at that location, and the people like Saturday." And so I asked him to not reschedule that until after I had a chance to talk to the council. And he said, "Well, if you can get them to kind of commit to scheduling and getting some volunteers and kind of recommit that, they would give us another chance." So that's what I want, I just wanted, just the consensus of the council. I mean, my, my thought was that Saturday's an important day. Maybe the council doesn't feel it that way, and then we can go ahead and go to Wednesday. So I just wanted to bring it up to you. If you feel that it is important for the community to have it available on a Saturday, then we would just make sure that when the time comes to schedule volunteers, that we all work a little harder to get people to do that.
Where else is this held at besides, held in every city?
They, not every city, but they hold it in several locations around the county. You know, like, I know Albany has it, Belgrade, they kind of go out into the county. But not so many Saturdays are available. You know, a lot of them have them during the week.
Is the hang-up with the sentenced-to-serv people, someone, do they have to have someone come with them to...
The sentenced-to-serv people come and they work with the actual Stearns County employers. But the issue is they don't have availability so much on Saturdays because of the way their scheduling goes. So during the week, they have a lot, it's a lot easier for them to schedule sentenced-to-serv to go out. On the weekends, some of them are on release and stuff, so they are not available.
The one thing about this is I don't think it's all just the city is oxen. I think, you know, they're getting people from township residents and everything else. So maybe in the meantime, we go out to the townships and ask them, hey, if you want this side of the, Stearns County to have it, maybe someone at the township level can volunteer too.
And, and that's a good idea, and we can talk to the township.
Rather than the city do all the volunteering and...
Yeah. I agree, and I think it certainly, you know, we're far enough away that we got plenty of time to talk with the townships and certainly the ones that are at least surrounding Sock here, and see if there's some interest. We're looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three.
And now that they have their new hazardous waste facility in St. Cloud, we no longer have to empty all those old paint cans and dump them into barrels. Now we just load them into bins and they haul them in there. So a lot of the work now is turning toward packing of fluorescent bulbs and just unloading the cars. So it's kind of changed of what you do. Physically, it's a little bit different. I mean, opening those old rusted paint cans was a tough job, so...
Good. All right, well, I think it sounds like consensus would be to keep it on Saturday and see if we can find some additional volunteers from outside of the city, possibly in the townships in the surrounding area.
Okay. I'll let him know.
General, I guess I should ask.
Yep.
All right, move on to unfinished business, Fourth Street, deferred assessment, Vicki?
As you know, we had our public hearing on the Fourth Street. We did have one individual that had applied for the senior citizen deferral of the assessment, which she did qualify for income, and so that was granted. So we do have one of the assessments that'll be deferred. How that works is if they meet the income and age, et cetera, guidelines, that we defer collection of the assessment till the resident no longer lives there or it loses its homestead status, whether they sell it or she moves out. And then, then the assessment will go back on. And then we did have the two gentlemen that were here at the public hearing and had extensive questions. I did send them both letters of explanation on each of the, of the bullet points or the items that they brought up. I have not received a response from either of them to date.
Thank you, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Move on then to our additional item that was handed out to you this evening. Eight B, the weed harvester movement, Sock River Watershed, Vicki?
And back on October 2nd, the council had asked this contract agreement between the city and Sock River Watershed and Lake Association go to the policy committee. And we've kind of had some email correspondence with the policy committee. And actually, both of them, which would be Dave and Mike, had asked that, get some full input from the city council on if they really feel we should even be involved in this. As you know, they, I briefly touched on it back in October, but there's some remaining funds of that weed harvester program, where the city was paying between nineteen and twenty-three thousand dollars a year into that for the city share, plus the lake owners were all paying into the fund. And the watershed district has since decommissioned the program. They're, they're no longer doing the weed harvester program, but there's residual funds in there. And so their proposal is to utilize those funds for invasive species control, but rather to do it chemically rather than with the weed harvester. But before they proceeded with that, they wanted to get the Lake Association and the city involved to kind of take over some of the management, maybe scheduling of sprayers, you know, when do we do it, developing the plan, developing the budget, et cetera. And so their attorney had submitted an agreement that just kind of says, this is what the city and Lake Association will do, and this is what the watershed would do. And the watershed basically would be the fiscal agent, and the city and the Lake Association would develop the plan and the budget. And we would coordinate when the spraying comes, when the DNR comes, et cetera. So that kind of gives you a brief in the nutshell. But after talking with both of the committee members, it's like, well, should the city even be involved in the management of this? You know, it was a watershed project. And yes, the city, a great share of those dollars that were collected did come from the city. But it's still a watershed project, and should the city take that on, given the fact that we're not, that's not our area of expertise? There's also the question is, is if the funds are no longer needed because the watershed discontinued the weed harvester, should they even be reallocated to chemical spraying? Is that the direction we want to go, or should we pursue dispersing it back? And the other question is, should the funds remain dormant in the event of a future need of the harvester? So those are all the kinds of things that they're talking about. But I really think we need a little direction from the council, and I'm not necessarily asking for it tonight. I just want to have a little discussion and dialogue about that whole program. And so we're, the Lake Association called me again this last week, and they're anxious to move forward. They want to make sure those dollars are available. They want to make sure that the city is going to help them out because they're volunteers. And the watershed doesn't want to manage that program anymore. So we're kind of sitting there with three parties, with all three having different viewpoints of what's, what we should do. And now Dave and I had a conversation, Mike and I had a long conversation on it yesterday. I don't think either of you really feel that strongly about the city being involved in this.
Oh, I, I definitely don't feel that the city has any reason to be involved in this. We don't have any expertise. I mean, I have a strong feeling that the funds were collected to operate a weed harvester. Haven't operated it for years. They should just return the funds. I mean, Utah said about thirty, forty thousand dollars that came from the city. And I, I don't like the idea that they're just going to hang on to it and just, ah, use it for something else. And I remember fifteen, twenty years ago, when the weed harvesting came up, and somebody said, "Well, why don't we use chemicals?" And we were told chemicals don't work in a lake with current. It's a river. They don't stay where you put them. You know, in a, in a waterway that we're constantly being told is, you know, being impacted by runoffs and things, somehow throwing more chemicals. I don't, that doesn't sound good to me. It seems like, if they, if they think this is the right way to do it, then they better be down here explaining before we start allowing them to hold the funds to do it.
I guess I have a few thoughts, and I know I've been thinking about this, because we talked a little bit about it a couple meetings ago. But one other thing, and I agree with you, Dave, completely, as far as us managing this project and putting together a plan and all those things, I completely don't think that's our expertise at all. I completely agree. I think if there is a desire to do something a certain way, whether it's chemicals or future harvest program of some sort, I would really like to hear from the watershed as to what that is. I think we're making a lot of assumptions, and nobody's came to anybody yet to tell us, well, this is, here's a plan that we think would work, and here's what we would envision you, city, and the Lake Association, if you both agreed to do. Whether or not we would agree to it and manage it, I feel, I just don't have enough information, I don't think, to answer that. But I think as far as the funds being able to be returned, I don't know what the problem is with that or how problematic that is to even do that. I guess I would also like input on that, and what's the process to go about that? I know when the program was put in place, I think almost every year, we questioned whether or not we should be contributing that twenty-some thousand dollars, but we had an agreement in place that said we were going to do it, and we followed through to it. Now we, looks like we've paid it for a lot of years and never got used, and now the money sits there. So I think there's just a lot of unanswered questions, Vicki. And I know we just got this this evening, so I think we all need to spend a little time and review this and maybe get back to you with more information as we go forward. But is there any, I mean, I know that the Lake Association wants to move this forward and is waiting for us. I guess we need more input from the watershed to really know what is the options. And what are we doing? I mean, I don't, I guess I'm just confused what they want us to do.
Well, one of the things, you know, I agree with both of you on that. I don't think we need to get into the paperwork shuffle on, on this whole thing. And I agree that I think the money should be just dispersed back to the whoever donated to it. The DNR is going to control anything that's going to happen with chemical spraying in the round room, regardless if it's the watershed or us or the Lake Association. They're the ones, they're the ones that are going to control it. And, you know, back in the agreement here, if I read this right, you know, they've got it. When it comes to insurance, the watershed district won't own any equipment or employ, any employees to implement the project. The association, the city may be able to do that. But we have to name the district in the insurance policy in case that anything comes back on them. Well, they're washing their hands of the whole thing, handing it over to us, but then we still have to insure them in case something comes back to haunt them, if something happens wrong, you know? To me, it's, all right, that's way more paperwork and administrative level than what we need to do. I think the fund should be just dispersed back to whoever donated. And if they want to make a donation to the DNR for invasive species control or somebody that's in charge of that at the state level, then it goes from there.
Yeah, well, I, I feel a lot that way, that give the money back for the weed harvester. Now, if there's a case to be made for a chemical spraying thing, then make the case and go from there. I think it just gets way too easy to say, well, it's easy to make the case, and we've got this money sitting here. We got to spend it on something.
And I actually think, I may be wrong, but I think there was some chemical spraying on Sock Lake done in the last few years, tied in with the Lake Association.
For the mill foil.
For the mill foil.
On the north end.
On the north end. I think that was part of the, you know, so it has been done, but we've never heard any real concrete black and white results as to what else it affected. And I think the watershed should have come with that too, so... But I don't know if they'd ever going to show up to tell us that, mainly because they're, they want out of this business, out of that harvester business and the funding. So whether or not they're going to come give us any answers, I don't know.
I just, I don't think we have any, we don't have any expertise in the field. I mean, those, those people are, that's, that's their main task, is taking care of the watershed and the lake. And I guess I don't believe that the city council has any. Will manage what goes on around the lake and dwellings and infrastructure and that. But as far as the actual health of the lake, I think that's better, better left to the watershed district. And the money, as far as that goes, give it back.
Well, I would, in, in response to what you're saying, this is very much alike the meetings that I've been to. And Dave and I had had the conversation about the chemicals, and does it stay where it is? And they assured me, yes, there's the chemicals now, they, they stay within twelve feet. And, and they talked about why they could or couldn't disperse it and those types of things. And that's why I, I think I agree that it's important for them to come and answer those questions. With their changeover over there and the things that are going on, it's been kind of, just kind of lagging here, waiting for them to, you know, if they have an administrator and who's in charge of this program now, to have them come and address the city council. It seems like you guys have the very same questions that I had when I went in there. They had explanations for a lot of these things, and I think it'd be good for you to hear it from, directly from them. hear it from, directly from them. So, you know, I could invite maybe their attorney, he's the one that seems the most up on, of course, he wrote the contract and to answer some of those questions or I'm not sure who to ask to come over here right now because, because their makeup is changing.
Well, I think we don't have a timeline that we have to have a decision anytime soon. It doesn't have to happen right away, obviously. I think, I think before any recommendation or action of the council comes, I do think we need to have our questions answered. And if they don't, you know, I think we can just give them time and let them know that, you know, and maybe we give them a window of, in the next 90 days or something so that we can get, you know, some answers back to our questions. And we've given you a bunch of questions and I know you had those on your mind as well, Vicky. So I think we, we do know that they're working through, I think they have a meeting tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, I was in there earlier this week and visited with them and maybe they will be moving forward, posting some positions so that they get some consistency within the group and maybe there will be some additional staff that will have some knowledge to go with us all. But they do have good people in there and I think it's just a matter of getting them over here and that they're able to share with us what really we can, we can do with it. I think I have bigger questions about what is the requirements with the funds that we currently have and can we actually distribute them back? I think that's a bigger question and how we go about that, which might be more of a legal question probably than, than anything. But I do, you know, I, I am concerned like everybody else about, you know, maintaining the water quality of the lake and the river and if there's certainly a, a good answer and a good process in place to utilize the funds, I'm not opposed to it. That's what we originally did designate them for is maintaining the water quality and certainly the, certainly the, the idea of taking care of the growth and things was important for us for a lot of years and we did that with the harvester. So I guess we just need more answers and if that would be the general consent of the council that we say we would like feedback within 90 days so that at least there's a timeline in place, if that's fair to everybody, I think we will ask you, Vicky, to let them know that before we make any decision, you have a list of questions we want answered as a council and that we would like that reply in 90 days. Hopefully by then they'll have time to review the questions and get back to us. General consent?
I would only ask that we add that if they're not going to get back to us, then, you know, this council will be asking for the funds to be dispersed.
I would agree.
I don't want them to think they can just not answer us and just go year after year and let it hang out.
I think we're all in agreement that if we don't get answers to what we're asking for this first one of the funds.
The one thing I, you know, I understand the Lake Association being anxious about this too because, you know, they're, they're the watchdog of the whole lake, you know, and it looks better for them if they make a request, if they got the city of Sock Center holding hands with them on this and I can't blame them, but whether or not we want to take on all this extra, you know, until we do get them answers, I don't know if we can go that far, so.
I guess I'd just like to, you know, I probably came off as kind of a hard stance here against everything, but, you know, I'll listen to if they come back.
I think we're, we owe it to everybody, including the association and the city and for us already contributing the funds, to listen to what they have to say in regards to these options. So I think we should, we should do that. And I also think if we're going to be looking at this binding contract that was presented by their attorney, that we would have some legal review of this as well down the road.
Right.
I wasn't expecting any action tonight. I just wanted to kind of bring it back up because the Lake Association wants us to act on this.
Right.
And so.
Very good. And I, and I can, I can certainly relate to them wanting us to...
Well, they talked about it.
Yeah, there you go. All right, thank you. We have no new business this evening. We'll move right into our consent agenda then. Our consent agenda this evening is a, we got our scheduled claims, total of unpaid claims of 33,956.2 and we had no paid claims this particular meeting, so we have a total of scheduled claims of 33,956.2. We had October checks of 2001 through 2026E and also 034425 through 034499 and three payrolls for a total of 351,432.36. Any questions in regards to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, seconded by Warren. Any discussion? Call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, not against. And informational items this evening, we have one. We have a radon meeting and I'll just kind of go over that a little bit. Our state representative, Paul Anderson, has scheduled a radon detective public meeting at City Hall here on Tuesday, November 26th at 4:30. The Minnesota Department of Health and Stearns County Environmental Services will be on-site providing information to the public about radon issues in Minnesota and also providing radon infection kits to anyone, any interested individuals. A new Minnesota law which requires disclosure of radon as part of a real estate transaction has precipitated the department's outreach. Radon is a naturally occurring gas which if not properly ventilated can have serious health effects. Fortunately mitigation is relatively easy. So we have a notification of the public meeting on Tuesday, November 26th here at City Hall at 4:30. Anything else for information? Merely none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Keith. Call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn. Thank you.